I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Works Center of June 2, 2005, to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silence. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Solar?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes?
Can we do one moment of silence for the officer?
Okay. Okay. Presentation, discussion, and approval of agreements for bulk fuel with Synergy Petroleum LLC. Ted.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Ted Wolf, Public Works Director. Today before you is the bulk fuel contract. Next slide, please. The City of Apache Junction entered into an agreement with Synergy last fiscal year in the amount not to exceed $840,000, utilizing a state contract. Staff recommends that the council approve this agreement, authorizing the city to contract with Synergy Petroleum for fuel for this next fiscal year through the state cooperative contract. And I'm open to questions.
The same fuel, I mean, dollar value?
Yes.
Same dollar value?
Yes, same amount.
Your Honor.
Yes.
How much did we use last year?
I think we were closer to about $780,000 is my recollection, but I'm not certain. That was for all city vehicles.
Yes?
Correct me if I'm wrong, last year we were kind of behind the eight ball on this one, and we were a little late getting it going, but this year it seems like we're right on time.
Yeah, last year we had some staff changes, we lost some people, and it fell through the cracks. So this, this year, or this next fiscal year, we're recommending using the state contract, but we are going to explore putting it out to contract, an RFP, and see if that is something we want to pursue sometime in this next fiscal year for the following fiscal year.
Okay, and then the remainder that we didn't use from last year, we continue to have that available to us, or does that, we start from scratch?
We start from scratch.
So if we don't use it, we lose it?
Yeah, pretty much.
The savings, clarify that, Matt, the savings are still there in the money.
Right, if we don't spend the general fund money, they just roll over into our savings account.
Yeah.
Or our general fund.
It's not a hard price that we paid?
No, we don't pay upfront, we only pay for what we utilize.
And right now, that you haven't got to the end of June?
No.
So you're still going to add to that number a little bit?
Right. We have plenty of fuel for this contract, we're just setting it up for the next year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just ask. It's not just city vehicles, it's also sewer district and fire.
Yes.
Correct, it's not, they do reimburse, yes.
Water.
Yeah, water also.
Fire, yeah.
Okay.
School district?
No.
No, RIGA does not include that, hasn't for a while, I think.
So it's sewer, water?
Fire.
Fire.
That's it?
Yep.
Your Honor.
Yes?
Any kind of figure, just curious, what we would be paying, how much more if we didn't tag along with the state?
Well, good question, I asked the finance department that very question, and they said, actually, it was a little cheaper this year. So going off state contract was a little bit cheaper than if we would have stayed where we were. So I don't, I'm not exactly sure why, it must be in the amount of fuel we're purchasing off the state contract. So what's actually financially was a little bit of a savings from what we had, our prior contract.
Okay.
When will we see this again?
Two weeks, it goes to consent.
Okay, thank you. Presentation, discussion, and extending the development agreement for 160 acres, property located at Meridian Drive and Southern Avenue. Bryant?
Your Honor, Matt, will you open up the map and just wanted to give a frame of reference to the mayor and city council, this item is in reference to a development agreement that you entered into in, well, not you, but a prior city council in 2009, at the southeast corner of Meridian Road and Southern, you'll see a drainage area that runs through this property that was a big part of that development agreement, it's zoned for mobile home park at that time, and so existing zoning is for that. In that agreement, we have agreed to take on significant part of, because it's regional water through the process, and so we're working with a developer to figure out what the development wants to be, they're a great partner, both parties agree in the amendment, and the idea of the amendment is to allow for more time for the developer and the city to work together in a mutually accepting type of project, meaning that the owner is interested in working with us on maybe potentially getting single-family homes there instead of mobile homes.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Bryant, ten years ago, council passed policy that there would be no more mobile home parks in Apache Junction?
The practice and policy is a longstanding one, so in 2009, for whatever reason, and we do have the developer, I don't know if Joel will let him come up, the council was, this was like the last one that I remember of ever allowing for manufactured home, yeah. Yes.
So yes, we did, we do have that policy not to allow any more mobile home parks?
That is correct.
So why would this still be zoned for mobile home parks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Joel?
They have longstanding zoning, they have grandfather rights that date back years, so they have a development agreement that recognizes that, so they basically are not subject to that rule.
So, but we're here to renew this contract?
Well, the development agreement, yes.
Which, at this point, we can say no mobile home parks?
You can, you have that discretion. Another thing that happened-
Hold on, hold on, I don't think I understand the question, the entitlements, we don't have authority to change that.
No, but his question was, can you say no, we don't want to extend it?
You can say that, but it doesn't change their-
It doesn't change their zoning, but it does change the development agreement. And depending on what use council ultimately allows, you might need a new development agreement anyway. So, and one thing that did happen in the last 10, well, I don't know exactly what year, but if you look on the map, there is an off-ramp or an on-ramp, that was something that happened during this development agreement, so that had an impact on their planning. So did the drainage from upstream, and like Mr. Powell said, we're trying to work a remedy so that that flow is a lot different than it is now. And so that's another thing that-
Well, the current agreement requires the city to accept and convey 761 CFS, the historical flow, and so that we're obligated to that. What I propose is this allows more time for the developer and the city to work together to get the quality of product that we want, and right now, the owner is very motivated to get single-family homes here.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
My question is, this agreement that happened in 2009, and they originally set it up to expire 21 years later, because nobody thought that there was any push to actually complete this at the time, so now we're looking at from the start to the end, you know, going to 40, is this just kicking the can down the road? Because it seems like it's been kicked for an awful lot of years with nothing going on, and if we kick it again, we've just added another 10 years of maybe looking at the same barren spot. What's to stop that?
Yeah, just a couple of things to be aware of about this property, it's in Arizona water territory, so the property has some challenges with that in terms of assured water supply, and if you're familiar with the way the water laws work in Arizona, with Arizona water, they don't have the assured water supply that you're familiar with, with Apache Junction Water District. And what that means is it is much easier for them to do apartments, and it's much easier for them to do mobile homes. So my recommendation is if you want to increase the chances of having mobile homes there, don't change, don't change the agreement, just leave it the same.
My question isn't about what's in the agreement, my question is about the time. I mean, right now, we're talking about them, hey, maybe actually completing something in the next five years, or at least attempting to, or we're saying, we're okay with sitting here till 2040, before those manufactured homes are there. That's my concern.
But if we, if we had pushed them too hard, they could have just gone ahead and built a mobile home park?
That is correct, that is their main business. He's the owner of several mini, I don't even know, I wish Sean could come up and talk, but they're representatives here, but it's, yeah.
Well, actually, it's not on the agenda that he speaks, so we could continue that if you want. However, his, the, Mr. Thesman, there was a father involved who had it for years and years and years. So Mr. Lakes, actually, you're not allowed to come up, I'm sorry, under the open meeting law. He, he does have a client who is the son of that father who passed away, and so there is a different management, there's a different management style, there's different management motivations. So I think you need to keep that in mind, too. But Mr. Powell's correct, if you, or Mr. Heck is correct, if you push too hard, yes, they can, and they have said that they can do mobile homes, they can do that, and there is a market for that, that's what they have said. So now, do you have to go out that far? That's discretionary also, you could say, no, we don't want to go that far, and you could also limit it, you know, to another five years or whatever you want to do. But you don't have to go out as far as what they have asked for. But Mr. Powell believes that that is a reasonable amount of time to get things in better order for a single family, and maybe some commercials, because we have tried that also.
Does it have to be residential, could it be?
Well, it's something, the development agreement might have to be amended in order to do that.
Yeah.
But that opens up the possibility, whereas, like you said, if you push too hard, it's like, they can put in mobile homes.
What do you mean, push too hard?
Push, say, you know what, we're not going to extend it, do what you have to do, you got, you got the zoning for manufactured homes, you could say, go ahead and do that if you want. But they have the legal right to do that right now. Rudy could come up to talk about their zoning, and he will probably tell you the same thing I just did.
Can we ask for conditions of, if they really want to have an extension, that we do do some renegotiating on what goes there?
Absolutely, we could renegotiate, we could continue this matter so that Bryant and I and Sean can meet, and if you want to throw out some things that you're looking for, maybe that's something we could come back and the next meeting, maybe we could have the developer speak.
Joel, are you saying that Rudy could come up right now and speak?
Yes, he's ever to come up. Rudy can, but not Mr. Lake.
He's got a lot more information on this that we're probably not understanding, and I'd kind of like to hear from Rudy.
Bryant?
Yeah.
The 2009 agreement was for 21 years?
Yes.
That takes this out to 2030, and this is 2025?
Adding 10 more years to that.
So does that mean that they're not going to build in the next five years? That's why they want to extend this out? So they're telling us right now that they're not going to do anything for the next five years?
I think there's so many unknowns about the ability for Arizona Water to provide water for them for single-family homes.
Okay.
So if Arizona Water can't provide the water, one of the avenues that I understand the developer can go down is to either do higher-density apartments?
Uh huh.
And/or-
Because they don't have to have approval.
Right.
Assured.
Right, and so in order for them to do, and this is something, you know, Rudy and I could talk more about, but, but they're going to have to take some years, some time, to work with Arizona Water to get their assured water supply so that they can have that ability to provide for a single-family homes.
So what's happening right now is that they haven't asked for assured water, or they have, and they've been told that there isn't?
So, so the process to get assured water supply for Arizona Water is going to be very litigious and lengthy, and so they've got to go through a process through the Arizona Department of Water, that's why it's so precious that your water district has the assured water supply.
Think about a NEPA study, and how long it takes for a NEPA-
But that's what I'm saying, it's already happening, though, right?
It's happening, but it's years, it could take years.
Nothing's happening with it.
And I think the potential is it's going to bump up against this timeline that they're getting to, and they just want to give themselves a little bit more time to do that part of it, as well as making sure the city is ready financially and infrastructure-wise to provide our end of the bargain, what we committed to in 2009, and I think those things go together increases our chances to get a single-family home product instead of mobile homes.
Okay.
My question after that statement is, if they're looking to do that, is there some interest on their behalf that they would put single-family, or is their only goal manufactured or apartments?
It's absolutely their interest to do single-family homes.
All right.
Can Rudy speak to the initial intents of what the council in 2009 was thinking, and basically fast-forward it to today, and the negotiations we've had with Mr. Lake on other, some single-family builders?
Could I ask one question before Rudy goes? That flow of water through there, do we have to protect that? That drain?
It's a female wash. It's that requirement that we are obligated, it's a regional stormwater-
So we have, they would have to figure out how to incorporate that into their plan?
We're working with them to incorporate it into the plan, but we are obligated from the 2009 agreement, now, none of you were here and did this, but we're obligated to take on, and I forget what the number I said, 760 CSI, it's a big chunk.
CFS.
CFS, CSI.
Okay.
Yeah.
Too much TV, too much TV. So Rudy, can you talk about the initial intent?
We're 700, yeah.
Sean, sorry, sorry, Mayor. I don't want to get you all in trouble.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the property was rezoned back in mid-2000s, I think around 2005 or 2007, it was rezoned for plus or minus 700 space mobile home park, rental space mobile home park, part of the property at the northwest corner was reserved for later rezoning, we were hoping to, some kind of commercial corner, it's actually, the corner is still zone GR, the rest of the property is zone mobile home park by planned development. So there is a conceptual plan in place for the, you know, 700 space mobile home park. The other thing that happened after that mid-2000s rezoning was ADOT did the, the connection there from Meridian to US 60, so that ate away some of the property, that reduced probably maybe 40, 50 lots, but the conceptual plan is still basically in place, there was supposed to be a green buffer along the highway, there was supposed to be a city marker along that stretch of highway to, you know, you've arrived to Apache Junction kind of thing, there were many, many, many conditions in that ordinance, it was one of our longer rezoning ordinances, but in fact, the zoning is still in place, a new development plan has not been processed, a couple of development proposals have come to us for discussion, but the zoning for mobile home park by planned development is still in place unless a new developer comes along and proposes something different, which will be subject to PNC recommendation and your approval.
So if I may, and there have been discussions with some single-family developers, correct?
Yes, there's been some discussion about mixed use to different densities for zoning, so a couple of different ideas have been discussed in recent memory.
Do they have the same water issue with mobile homes?
Yes.
So either way, they got to come up with an assured water plan unless they go with-
Well, a rental space park, no, a subdivision, yes, townhomes, yes, apartments and mobile homes, no. You don't need an assured water supply for a mobile home park or for a rental apartments complex.
Your Honor.
Just renting out the spaces in the aspect, so that calls up-
So it's a rental, I get it.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So Bryant, you had mentioned earlier that when Bryant was talking about the wash, that you're working with them for these plans, right? And then Rudy, you said there's conceptual, both of these are for a mobile home park, am I correct?
In our plans, we're not planning for a mobile home park.
So when you said you're working with them, I mean, don't you have to have some sort of footprint down in order to start working out how the wash is going to go? What's the footprint? Is it a mobile home park, is it an apartment complex?
A mobile, it's a single-family home that's given us some conceptual plans that show an area, but we need more, part of the issue is for the amendment, we need more time to be able to develop this with engineering and to be able to collect revenue to be able to pay for it. Because we're going to, actually, the numbers are, we have to cover, they are, the developer is obligated to handle 761 CFS, and we're obligated for the rest of it, of the 3,300, so we're looking a big chunk of the water.
So I'm curious, how many mobile home parks does Apache Junction have right now?
129, 23.
Of all sizes.
Of all sizes and all different types, yeah.
Okay, now, just out of curiosity, I would assume this would be a 55 and older situation?
I know, I don't think the planned development zoning called for a 55-plus community.
But it did say adult only.
I didn't say an age, but I did say adult only.
Are you talking about what we're proposing, or what?
No, what was original.
What was original?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I feel like you guys already have some sort of conceptual idea of what's going to go here, and it's already been discussed, and it's already been talked about, but for some reason, you're not coming out and telling us that, yes, it's a mobile home park?
Problem is, is the water supply.
Well, water supply or not, I mean, if you're talking and you have conceptual ideas, what is the project? Is it a mobile home park?
We have a conceptual plan from the mid-2000s for the originally proposed mobile home park, we can share that, that's no problem.
But nothing, nothing recent history?
For a different configuration? No, not for a mobile home park. Now, we spoke to a developer within the last six months who had a very conceptual plan for kind of a mixed-density single-family home development. That never officially got into any kind of initiated process. I'd have to check to see if there was actually even a preliminary development review done that we, for a conceptual plan, we might be able to share, honestly, I don't recall. But we can show you what we've got thus far, but if an official submittal was never made, I'd be real hesitant to suggest that that took any kind of traction.
Sure, sure, I understand that. Okay, so this is an agreement put in 2009, so we're looking at 16 years old, and it's due to expire 2030, is that right, Council?
2030.
2030, and the whole purpose behind this talk right now is to extend this, but am I correct?
Right, that's just, the idea of this is to give more time for the developer and the city to work together on-
So now that we're cracking a new egg here, you're telling us that we don't have any authority to say, okay, no mobile home park?
The zoning is still there.
I was going to say-
This is a development agreement, so it's different than zoning, right?
Well, this would be a development agreement.
Development agreement is completely separate from zoning.
Because I can, I can rattle off a couple places in town that the zoning allows, but they still need a development agreement to do what they want to do.
The difference here is they don't need a development agreement change.
Right.
What I'm trying to propose is this allows for the city more time to have a chance for the owner who is motivated to bring in something different.
That is, but this-
That's what's in the interest of the city.
Historically, this owner does mobile home parks.
That's correct. Rudy, if I could ask, if the development agreement expires, what are their entitlements on this property?
To build something very, very similar to their conceptual plan proposed with their rezoning back in 2006, 2007, whenever that was, once again, some of the corner lots in the southwest corner have now disappeared, but if they do something very, very similar with the same types of amenities, with the same type of buffer, they could conceivably submit their construction and engineering plans tomorrow.
So, okay, that was my final question, so is this, this fell on our plate because there's been some, you know, talk about this, I'm assuming recently?
It fell on our plate because they have a home builder, and because of these unresolved issues, they were not able to get the home builder under contract.
Because of the water issues?
Water issues, but also the drainage issues and timing issues. It's taken our, it's taken our staff some time to figure out what our, what the cost will be, where the water's going to go, and what our obligation is.
So Arizona Water doesn't have the resources to build single-family homes? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, they do not have the assured water supply to allow for that. That's why we're seeing more and more single-family rentals and apartments, and that's what they can provide.
Can water companies do IGAs amongst themselves? So like, can Arizona Water and Apache Junction Water get together and say, yes, together we can make this happen?
I don't think so, I don't think Title 44 allows that.
It should.
But Rudy, if, it should, that's a state law thing, so you talk to your-
But can we put it, something in, and renegotiate something that says that we're willing to extend the time to 2040, with the understanding that the developer will look into single-family homes?
I think you could, uh, pull out a lot of things tonight. I think Mr. Lake is taking notes. And then we could meet with Mr. Lake and then we could come back at another meeting and we can have a different type of agreement if you like, or at least talk about it.
I have one other question from the original. In the original, on page 25 out of 34, in the top right-hand corner over by Meridian, there's 12 acres that says exception. What is that?
That's the piece that was reserved for a possible future commercial corner. The whole property, uh, was zoned RSGR. Well, what is now RSGR, back then it was just called GR. So when the, the, the majority of the property got zoned for the mobile home park, uh, the city at the time was really, uh, adamant about trying to preserve a commercial corner and that's what that exception is.
So even if he was building the manufactured, we already had carved out, we want that 12 acre, that 12 acres as commercial. I just wanted to be sure as to what that was for.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So to clarify, Brian, even if we give them this extension to 2040, give them an extension to 2099, there's still no guarantee that Arizona Water is ever going to give them approval to build homes because, I mean, that's just a total unknown that-
That's a total unknown.
That there will ever be water. So to answer Robert's question, in another 10, 15 years, they may finally say, we can't build homes here. We may never be able to build homes here, so we're going to build a mobile home park.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
Of course, you know Arizona Water is working very hard on getting the-
They are. The assured water supply.
Yes.
They, they want to do whatever-
They're working very hard. They're part of the Bartlett Dam, Verdi River Surface Water Agreement that we are a part of as well. They want to get some renewable. They've mostly been a primarily a groundwater system. And because of Arizona Water law change, they're working super hard to get their assured water supplier, get some-
Explain, explain to me how, cause this is, again, I know nothing about this water stuff here in Arizona. It confuses me. From what's been going on for the last 15 years to the next five years, 10-year extension, what has to happen for Arizona Water to magically come up with being able to guarantee water there?
They need to show and prove that they have, within their water budget allocation, that they have renewable 100-year water supplies. And the way you have that is by working with groups like SRP, the Native American Indian communities that have those water supplies that are typically surface water, either from the Colorado or from the Salt and Verdi.
So do you, does, does the developer have to keep going back to them every year or however often and saying, is there water this year?
Once they have it, they don't have to, but-
Yeah, but we don't know when that'll ever, when they'll have it.
Yeah, I mean, that, they, I don't think they have to go back and ask. I mean, the water providers have to prove to Arizona Water they have that assured water supply.
I'm going to throw in a, it was a different part of this in the aspect of it's concerning the Arizona Water. Uh, I had a meeting down in, uh, Superior. And Superior cannot have developments right now because of their inability to have assured water. And, uh, the maximum number of homes that they can build is three. And that's it. And, uh, they can improve what's there, but they cannot expand at all. And that's all because of the, their water supplier is, I want to say tied to this. So yes, Arizona Water is working very hard on this. And, uh, whatever they can do to acquire it, it is, uh, something that, uh, it's going to put some major, uh, handcuffs on communities that, uh, are supplied by Arizona Water. And, uh, unfortunately, that's what's going on right now with our water supply.
I get that, for sure. I mean, to throw a little irony in here, what's that kitty corner from the northeast corner of that lot? What, what complex is that?
Is there any in Manor?
No.
No, right here.
Arizona Water.
Oh.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any push or interest in turning that whole entire, um, lot into commercial? Where an assured water supply wouldn't be, the, the amount of water would not be as high?
I believe our former economic development director, Pat Ainsworth, looked into some possibilities, had some conversations, but, uh, nothing ever came to fruition.
And I think the owner has shopped that for many years and there's no market. At least they haven't had any, they've had some interest lately, like single-family.
Well, there's no market because we, nothing was growing at the time. But now, there, there's this huge push to the east. Is that a possibility in the next five to 10 years? So extending this contract to 2040, you know, who knows what could happen in five years or 10 years? It may come down to where, you know, Arizona State law changes. And now the only thing that they could put there is, is a, you know, no-grass baseball field or something. Who knows, you know?
Well, that, that, that's a, that's a great point. Uh, 2009, 2010, um, that lot was getting, you know, wasn't getting a second look. But here we are, 15 years later, now that it's becoming a pretty valuable piece of property for all sorts of commercial or even, or even residential. So, um, I don't know if that's taken into consideration, um, that, that, that can be a whole new landscape now that, um, Apache Junction is, uh, you know, adding homes by the thousands.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can. Rudy, regarding drainage, uh, Weeks Wash feeds into this, correct? And Palm Wash, is it both?
I think it's Palm Wash.
Okay.
Palm Wash.
So if things are solved upstream, or if you mitigate some of the drainage, then the flow down in this area will be less. Is that correct?
It will be less, but we are, we aren't exactly sure how much less.
And is that in a floodplain?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, yes. The new FEMA flood maps really do a job on EJ, including this area.
Okay.
A procedural question. So, Your Honor, we have this on as an, we had thought we might be able to do a consent agenda. We'll, we, we'll need some time to go back and talk to, to the representative here and then we can come back and do another work, work session and go over things.
Okay.
So we'll just need to have it pulled from the consent.
That's what, um, is that what you're hearing? Cause I think that's what you'd like us to do.
Over here.
Probably wouldn't hurt. Would, would the, um, gentleman be able to talk at the next?
We will make sure that that is open to, uh, Mr. Lake and his client if they want to show up.